So. We have got the recording on. Good evening, everyone and. Wonderful Wednesday in February was a beautiful day here in Fayette County. I hope. People got some time to to be outside a little bit on a beautiful day today. And we are talking about running for school board. And hopefully, we will go through just some quick basics. And. Hopefully then get to people's questions. So on this first slide, I'm assuming that you guys can see my screen. So. You give me maybe a thumbs up emoji or type in the chat if you can see my screen, that would be good. You never know with Zoom what's going on. So the first screen. Has my contact info and I will be sending this presentation out to everybody. Who is on the call, so don't worry about trying to get screenshots or take notes. You'll get this. Presentation emailed to you, but has my contact information, email, cellphone. Feel free to contact me with questions and. Anything that you have going on. So let's see here. So what we're going to cover. And this is going to be an interactive webinar. So anytime. You have a question, feel free to do the raise hand. Thing and we'll, we'll see if that works. If not. We'll see, we'll get through the presentation and at the end, I will turn off the recording. And let people unmute themselves if they've got other questions that we don't get to. You can also type questions at any time into the chat. And so hopefully, I will see those as well. So. What we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about a little bit about what? School board people members do. We can talk about how they are elected. Here in Fayette County. Talk about how one becomes a candidate and sort of all the official documents and rules around that. We'll talk a little bit about the decision to run for office. And we'll talk a little bit about just how one campaigns and does that. So. We will get started. So what is a school board member do? I wanted to start with this. A school board member is part of a governance team. As an individual, a school board member has very little power to. Change what's going on and influence things. One, of course, as a school or member has the bully pulpit and an audience and. And a place to speak, but. From an official capacity, an individual school board member really does not have any individual power, right? You're a group of five school board members. And what do we do? We hire and evaluate the superintendent. The superintendent is in charge of all of the day to day operations. Of our school system. So. Anything that happens with a teacher in a classroom in a school building during the day. It's really up to the purview of the superintendent who runs the school system. We hire that person. We pass the budget. And set the tax rate. And we make policies. That the superintendent and the school system has to follow. We serve as a voice for public education. I think if they county people know how important. Public schools are and. How crucial they are to the health of a community. I would be willing to bet that many of the people on this call moved to Fayette County. Because of our school system. So you do get to serve as that important voice for public education. And we do vote and approve of personnel decisions. So anyone working in our school system. Does get voted on and approved by the board, but that is all based on the superintendent's. Recommendations and. And so we're not. You know, deciding on our own. Who gets hired, who the football coaches, that sort of thing. What do you not do, right? You're not off on your own. Like I said, there's a team of five people, five school board members. And the superintendent and. If one school board member is off working on their own, trying to do things. That's, that's not good for the system, right? Individual school owners don't make hiring decisions. I don't decide. You know, who your second grade teacher is going to be, who the football coach is going to be. That sort of thing. And I'm not really there to interfere in school operations. So. I get a lot of calls from constituents. They're unhappy with a teacher. Or they're unhappy with a principal and how they handle. A discipline decision. Perhaps, or. Maybe sort of, you know, how the bus is going in the morning or where the bus stop is. Right? Those are all questions that I get a lot as a school board member. And I work hard to connect. Those. Those parents. And citizens with the appropriate people who run those departments. But I'm not the one who's making the decision about. Bus stops. About. Discipline about really about. Anything on a day to day basis. Cause it's important to remember that. You know, the Fayette County schools is a system. Right? There's about 20,000 students. That's a lot of students. Right? Roughly about 49% of our students these days are white kids. Right? We've got about 27. 150 employees of about 1500 of those are teachers. We've got 24 traditional schools. 14 elementary schools, five middle schools, five high schools. Plus some additional programs at our Fayette Live Academy. Right? That's a lot of buildings and a lot of people. Our budget's about $230 million. Each year for our operating budget. We get about a little less than half of that from the state. Which is a change over the last few decades. The state used to contribute more. And we get about $30 million in East Boston sales tax money each year that we use on. Capital improvements. And physical things like computers and things like that. So. Remember anytime, feel free to. Throw some questions in the chat. Or raise your hand. Otherwise, I'm just going to keep, keep rambling. All right. So people ask me a lot. School board member, how much time does that take? There's no, no direct answer, right? I can tell you that officially, we've got. Roughly two meetings a month, some months. It's one. In other times when there's a lot of stuff going on, we'll have extra meetings. Right? Each of the meetings depends on what the agenda is. It depends on how many people are there. But you can count on about, you know, three or four hours per meeting. Each month and. You know, that's the minimum requirement. Right? There's other additional sort of ceremonial. Things that you do, go to graduations, award ceremonies. We run around to schools early this week to pass out the. Teacher of the year finalist awards, ribbon cuttings. That sort of thing, right? Schools tend to invite you to come talk. To their PTOs or school councils or groups of students. You know, those kinds of things. Are optional and different board members participate in those things in different ways. Right? There are school visits one can make, sort of see how things are, check in on the schools, check in on. On the parents and teachers, right? Show up at the elementary school carnival, that sort of thing. Show up at the football game and just talk to people. That's sort of the politicking thing. There's community organizations, of course, you can get involved in. From the Chamber of Commerce to homeowners associations. Rotary Club, Kiwanis Club, all opportunities to interact. With the public and talk about schools. But again, optional activities. And then there's sort of the political piece to it. School board members will get to our partisan. Position. So you are affiliated with a political party. So you can also choose to participate in political. Organizations like the Fayette County Democratic Committee, Fayette Democratic Women. Fayette County Republicans, depending on what party you're on, et cetera. So. We did get a question in the chat about the hours of the day that we meet. So right now. Our two official meetings of the month will usually have one. During the day. So usually. Monday at 2:00 PM. We'll have a meeting on the second Monday of the month and then. Think maybe first, I don't know, first or second, and then either the third or fourth will have a 7:00 PM. Meeting. So usually once during the school day during working hours and then once. In the evening, that is different than it has been in the past. When I started on the school board, all both of our monthly meetings were in the evening. So that's a. That's one of those tradition things that. Certainly could be, could be changed if a future school board. Wanted to. Just sort of interestingly enough. Right? Our school boards are on Mondays because. Back when there were printed newspapers in Fayette County that covered local news. The press deadline was Tuesdays. So we had, we moved our meetings Monday so we could. Meet the press deadline of the local papers. Since everything's online now, that's not. Really quite as relevant. Another question, why did we change to during the day? We changed one of our meetings during the day because. That's, that was our work session meeting rather than. That's the meeting where we do a little bit more discussion. Don't usually vote on things. We usually get a lot of presentations from staff members. And so it was really sort of for. The convenience and such of the staff members who were making presentations to not. Sort of require too many people to. You know, give up their, their evenings and a little bit of an unpaid sense to present to a school board meeting. So that's why we moved to. One meeting in the afternoon. Question, Gwinnett wants to be nonpartisan. Do you think that's in the cards for Fayette? Let me talk about, we're going to put that in. We're going to, we're going to hold that till we get to a little bit more about the election rules and there's some. Sort of a couple of different factors. We can talk about the partisanship in a minute. And the last question I have in the chat so far is how many school board members have full time jobs? Right now, out of the five of us, the three of us have. Have full time jobs, but those three people. Also mostly work for themselves and have flexible schedules. So the afternoon meeting is not as big of a deal for them. As it would be for someone who had a more traditional nine to five job. Hope that answers those questions. All right, let us look here and see what the. Next slide might bring. Oh, how we're elected. So. There are five school board members, like I said. Four of us are elected by districts and we'll get to that map in a minute. One is elected at large by the whole county. We have four year terms and they're staggered. So two people will be up for election this year and three people. Will be up for election in two years. And they are partisan elections, which means. You are on the ballot and you are affiliated with a political party. In Georgia, that's pretty much means Democrat or Republican. Georgia has a very limited valid access for. Anyone who's not affiliated with one of those two parties. And we get into sort of a long debate about. How those rules work and so forth, but it's very hard to be. A third party or an independent candidate in most races in Georgia. So. So they're partisan. Wait, now, now I've done it. So we got asked about. The partisan nature of. The elections and. So on one hand, I think that I did it again. One hand, you think sort of why would a school board election be partisan? Right? We don't have Democratic kids. We don't have Republican kids. We've got. You know, we've just got students. A little bit, it is in the eye of the beholder. Whether you are the partisan party that has control. Of the sort of body versus not, whether you think school board issues, school board election should be partisan. So right now, I think what generated the question was particularly in Gwinnett. There is an effort by the state legislature to change. The school board elections from partisan to nonpartisan. So this is. An effort by some state legislatures. It is not an effort by the Gwinnett County School Board to change how they are elected. And part of the reason that there is this effort is, is there has been a shift on the Gwinnett County School Board. From Republican control to Democratic control. So because of that shift. The Republican legislature wants to change how those races are elected. Whether or not you think that's a good idea or not, a little bit depends on your, on where you sit, right? There are pros and cons to having school board elections be partisan. There are pros and cons to why one would change from one to the other. One of the issues related to that is. Often in Georgia, nonpartisan elections happen during the primary in May. And partisan elections happen in November. So. If you're looking at that question, you want to make sure that you're paying attention to when those elections are gonna, gonna happen. So I don't know if that answered, answered the question. Because there isn't really, you know, an answer. It's a kind of an opinion thing. People like partisan election. Because they feel like it gives them an idea of knowing a little bit about a candidate when they don't really know anything about a candidate. I don't know if that's true or not. On the other hand, it adds a whole another. Sort of level of. The adult and the politics into what should be decisions about kids in school. So. The other thing I've got on this slide that's different in Fayette County than in most places. Is that if a vacancy does. Happen on the Fayette County School Board, someone doesn't finish the rest of the term. They resign for some reason. There is no special election. The people who are left on the school board will pick the replacement for the remainder of the term. It's in fact how, how I did originally get to be on the school board in Fayette County. But that is a sort of a weird thing that doesn't happen. In most places, in most places, there's a special election. So here's the map. Of the four districts in Fayette. Now, I will tell you, this map has not been officially approved and, and won't be. Till the 21st, but. I barring a change in heart from. My colleagues, this is the map that that will be passed. You can see, so this year in District Four, the green. Where I represent. And District Two, the pink district will have elections this year. Districts one and three and the at large seat will have elections in 2024. This map is very, very similar to the map that we have all been using for the past four years. Since the Voting Rights Act lawsuit. There is just a little bit of change between Districts Two and Four. And let's see if I can. All right. I don't know how to make a pointer. But there is a small area sort of in the top right that is shifting from District Two to District Four. And then there's an even smaller area. Just down on the bottom right where just mostly. Very few residents shifting the other way from four to two. So if you want more information about the sort of the specifics of these maps and. And how they came about and the pros and cons of those, I could do that. Now, but there will also be, this will also be discussed at the next Fayette County NAACP. Meeting, which will be on Saturday that I will be participating in. We're talking specifically about. Redistricting there. So. So four districts, I represent District Four. Okay, qualifications to be a school board member. You have to be a citizen. You have to be qualified voter, which means you have to be 18 years old. You have to live here for a year. And. You can't, you can't work for the school system or the State Board of Education or be on the board of another school. That's it. That's what you gotta be. Those are it. So dates coming up this year. Qualifying dates, that's when you put your name on the ballot and we will go into that in just a little bit. March 7th to 11th. Right? That is less than one month away. That is one, when one officially gets on the ballot. For the primary in May. Could be a runoff in June and then the election in November. And if you notice, I got this subject change up here. And. The reason I've got it as subject to change is. Some of you might know, there's been some lawsuits filed against some of the Georgia redistricting. Particularly for Congress. And. The status of those lawsuits. Could impact when. When dates happen. So if there's a lawsuit that. You know, does not get resolved in time or the judge issues a stay. Obviously, people can't qualify for districts if they don't know what the districts are. And so that could cliche everything back, but these are currently the dates that we are working with. So to be a candidate, you, there's sort of two paths that you have to follow. One is your campaign finance. Rules that you've got to follow. And so we'll talk about the declaration of intent. And then the second is the actual qualifying, getting your name officially on the ballot. So the first thing is the campaign of finance disclosures. You have to follow, file a declaration of intent. Saying that you plan to be a candidate for an office before you raise any money or before you spend any money. Right? That affidavit is filed at the local elections office. And I've got a link. There's all sorts of information on the Georgia government ethics site about how to be a candidate and what you've got to file. So before really you make any sort of public announcements about, I want to be a candidate for school board. You've got to file that, that declaration of intent. And then once you file that declaration of intent. There's a regular schedule for filing a campaign finance reports. And basically campaign finance reports. Are how much money you took in and how much money you spent. It's. Kind of just a basic checkbook register of your campaign activity and those reports are then. Public. There is also an alternative. If. You feel like you're not going to raise or spend $2,500. More than $2,500 in total. Then. You can file an affidavit and then you don't have to continue to file the regular reports that have certain. Certain due dates. So that's sort of one piece is, is the campaign finance piece. This is the declaration of intent that you would file at the local office available online. It's the basically your, you know, your name and, and, and basic information. So qualifying. Is when you put your name officially on the ballot. That is happens in March and since it's a partisan race, that will happen with your local political party. So either the Fayette County Democratic Committee or the Fayette County Republicans. Each county party. Will publish sort of the exact times and places for where that qualifying happens. At the time of qualifying, you will go in, you will fill out your affidavit. Saying you, you're going to, you're a candidate. That you fulfill the requirements and you will pay a qualifying fee. So the qualifying fee is $306. Generally. That fee is paid. With a money order or cashier's check. There is a process to get signatures in lieu of paying the fee if, if the fee is. If you're unable to pay that fee. So you don't have to. Pay any money or do anything other than sign your name when you file your declaration of intent. But once you are officially on the ballot. To get officially on the ballot, you have to pay that, that qualifying fee. If you're curious, half of that qualifying fee goes to the local elections office. To help offset the cost of elections and half of that qualifying fee. Is kept by the local political party to do with what they wish. And then I, you know, there's a lot of information on the Secretary of State site about, about these forms. So you will file the. This. This affidavit. Saying that, you know, you meet the requirements. You, valid voter, you have lost your voting rights, been convicted of crime, et cetera, et cetera. And you will also, in addition, file a special affidavit for your local Board of Education that basically. Says you, you understand what the school board ethical and conflict of interest rules are. So that happens in March and you're on the ballot. Name printed in the newspaper and all that. So why would you want to do that? You know, why do you want to, would someone go about running for office? You know, do you care what happens in our community? Are you interested in, in what happens to our kids and in our schools? Do you have a child or a relative? In our schools? Do you care about the future of our community, the future of our property values? All reasons to run for office. And I can tell you right now. And I know that you know this. Because you have seen politicians on TV. If you are on this Zoom call, you are qualified. To run for office. Right? The school board, there is nothing special. That you need to know beforehand. There's no, you don't need an education degree. You don't need to be a teacher. You don't need to have a. Background and I mean. If you are a citizen in our county that cares about. If you are a citizen in our county that cares about schools. And and interested in putting time in and thinking about schools and you are qualified and. And you should feel like you can do this. You know, but you gotta, you gotta be in, you gotta know what you're doing, you gotta talk. To your network, who, who do you know? Who your colleagues, who else you know in the community that you can sort of float this idea. You know, and your family has to be in. Right, once you become a candidate. You're, you're all in, right? It is the most public thing that you will ever do. Putting your name out there and asking people to choose you. It's also one of the most private things you'll ever do because. No one else in your life is going to care about it as much as you do and they will, everyone you know. Will have a sort of alternative designs on your time from your kids and your spouse to to other people, so. You know, you have to be committed. Doesn't mean you have to spend every waking second doing it. But, you know. There are people who will. Will just put their name on the ballot just to see what happens and I would encourage you to only do that if. If you really have. We did get a question about the compensation for serving on the Board of Education. The board members in Fayette County make eight hundred and fifty dollars each month. So it is, it's not a real lucrative position, you make a whole lot more as a county commissioner. Go figure, if someone can explain that, I would love to understand it, but. I hope that answers your question, I think the chair. Of the board gets a little bit more. You know, tidbit on this, my colleagues. Maybe five or six years ago voted to raise their own pay during a financial crisis when we were. Cutting jobs and closing schools, but that's a story for a different time. So, you know, so you you think you want to run, so what is, what's the story you're gonna tell, why are you running? If you want to run for office, you gotta have the right messaging, you gotta. You know, you have to have an answer to the question, why are you running? That you sound confident and. You can do in less than thirty seconds. Because every single person you meet is gonna ask the same question and you, and you've got to have an answer to that. So have an answer that, tell your story, why are you doing, why do you care, what do? What is your investment? What are the values that you bring? People. Become a candidate and they start going to talk to people and they think that people want to hear. Their resume. And their plans. Right, really what voters want to hear about are your values and who you are as a person. Right, and more than anything these days. I think voters are looking for people who are authentic, I think. When I grew up. Right, the stereotypical politician was sort of the plastic polished. Package who could answer, you know, no questions and be positive about everything, and I think. I think those days are gone, I think voters are looking for real people who they can identify with. There is a question in the chat about training sessions for school board members, so. There is an extensive new school board member training course that. Whoever is elected will will be able to take given by the Georgia School Boards Association. I think that generally happens about over two days. There are regular training continuing education requirements for school board members, so there's a lot of courses available. All of those things are paid for by the district. And so, you know, there's a lot to know, if you've been around schools at all, you know that even learning. Some of the acronyms that people talk in, you know, takes a lot of time, so. There's certainly lots of training and lots of things to know, but there's also a lot of support both within and. Without the district to help learn some of that stuff. So campaigning. Campaigning is getting your, having the resources to get your message to the to the right number of voters, so. A little bit campaigning is going to be dependent on. Sort of what kind of campaign are you running, are you running? In a general election in November as a Democrat against a Republican? Or are you running in a Democratic primary in May? The number of people who vote in those elections is different. Which voters vote in those elections are different and and what your messaging might be to those voters. Might be different, but. You should be able to get a pretty idea looking at past election results, how many votes you're gonna need to win that election. And that gives you an idea of what you're looking for. Elections cost money, you have to do fundraising, fundraising is without a doubt the. Thing that every new candidate says they hate the most. People are not used to doing it, people don't like doing it, it is uncomfortable. At first to call your friends and and people you know and ask them for money. It's not something we're used to doing. But it is something that you can learn how to do and get good at because. You're not asking them for money for you as a gift. You're asking them to invest in your campaign to make the community better. And people want to be a part of making their community better, people want to be a part of campaigns, people. Want to donate when they're asked, but you gotta be able to pick up the phone and do that and you start by. Calling your aunt, calling your mom. Calling the people you went to school with, calling your friends and going from there. And then, again, depending on the campaign. You're gonna choose sort of how many and and which kind of voters. That you want to talk to or knock on their doors. And there are ways to help get voter information. If you are a Democratic candidate. You can pay for access to Vote Builder, which is the Democratic voter. Information file so that you can see who has voted Democratic in the past. Who, you know, lives in your district and and how you might want to want to target them. And then, you know, you gotta talk to people. You can knock on their doors. Personally, you can get volunteers to knock on doors, you can call people on the phone, you can get volunteers to call people on the phone. And then there's, you know, lots of events. Local, if you're a candidate, I encourage you to go to all of your local political. Party events, particularly if you're running in a primary. Right, there's different community events, Chamber of Commerce, you know, downtown Fayetteville. Peachtree City, Parkton Recreation, they all have. Events going on all the time and then of course you can create your own events, have meet and greets at people's houses. Try to get HOAs to invite you, et cetera, et cetera. And then, of course, there's. Yard signs, direct mail. Their campaigning. Is a little bit of art and science, so. You'll find if you, if you get into this and become a candidate, you will get people who will swear to you that. Yard signs are the most important thing that they did and they would not have won their election if they did not have the yard signs they did. You will also meet people who will tell you accurately that yard signs don't vote. And you shouldn't spend your money or your time dealing with them because. You know, you should be out talking to voters. You know, I think David Scott as a congressional candidate. Has done very well in his elections the last three or four cycles, I think, because he's got the best yard sign game going, but. You know, everyone's got to make their their own decision about what's. What what they think is going to be the best strategy for them depending on the specific election and and timeframe and stuff. So we have a question, let's see. Go back, I think I missed a question. Question specifically about. Whether you can serve on the school board, run on the school board, if you are on college Board of Trustees. Advisory boards, something like that, I don't. Want to answer off the top of my head, but I can tell you if you go to the Secretary of State's. Website, it gives you, there is a link. To the exact qualification and the exact code sections. That that deal with that and I would have to look specifically on a specific question, so I don't want to answer that off. Off the top of my head, I don't think so. I think it is is related specifically to being on the Board of Trustees of a K twelve institution. But again, don't quote me. And then we got another question. Sort of referencing the current political climate and assault. On public education and the question is, should a candidate be concerned about being harmed by these extremists? And I will tell you that I have. In my ten years of doing this, I have had. Many unpleasant interactions with extremists, but I can also tell you that I have never personally felt unsafe. You know, the world seems like a crazy place. I I haven't seen it. Here in Fayette, you know, some of the horror stories you've heard about other places about. You know, school board members being. You know, followed home or crazy stuff like that, hasn't happened here, I don't see it happening here. You know, I can tell you sometimes my mom gets worried, she calls me from New York, but. So I wouldn't worry about being personally harmed, but I am. I couldn't be more worried about the harm to public education in general and our children specifically. I mean, just this week. The state legislature is just, they are. Just sort of going off the rails with bills about banning discussions of history and. You know, turning people into sort of the teacher police to monitor conversations and. Telling parents that they have the right to sort of opt out of anything that they might not like and. Giving parents the options to, you know, pull books from the curriculum and the library if. If they don't like them and. It is. The last few years have been. So difficult, I mean, for everyone and every reason, but. Particularly for our public schools, not only have. We've lost so much time with our students and particularly our most vulnerable students, but. School boards have become the place where. A lot of the political hostility we see in our. Country as a whole has sort of been focused, whether it's on mask mandates. Or whether, you know, when it's safe to open school. Sort of the forefront of making up religious reasons to to be able to sort of get out of anything. I don't think. You know, there's too much religious doctrine on on mask use out there, things like that, it's. It's a crazy time to be in public education, it is. But it's also sort of a rewarding time too because there's. You know, these are still our kids and there's still so much promise and there's still so much we need to do for them, and so. You know, I think I said this in in one of my earlier emails, I mean, I feel like. Done this for a long time, my kids have graduated, it's time for new leadership, but if there's one thing that. Makes me want to stay, it's it's fighting these fights for our kids and. And pushing for our school system to keep doing better, so. And then just sort of my last slide is is. I want to talk a little bit about the difference between campaigning and governing. Running for school board and being on the school board. Campaigning is all about division. It's all about which team are you on, are you on my team or you're not on my? It's looking at voters and putting them in two categories, you're my voter or you're not my voter. And only spending time with people who you think are going to be your voters. And it encourages rhetoric. You know. That highlights those divisions between your team and the other team. Being on the school board, governing. It's the complete opposite. It's all about bringing the community together for a common goal. There aren't teams in our schools. All our kids are all our kids and. And it's, it's very, very interesting sort of dynamic in that. The way we pick the people to govern and bring us together is by putting them through this process that. Is designed to separate us, so. When you're thinking about the campaigning and what happens next. I hope that you you think about sort of that. That dichotomy, so. That's sort of all my rambling, I went through everything pretty quickly and. Covered a lot of ground, I know, like I said, I'll be sending out this this presentation and. That has the links in there, the to to all that information, has my phone number, all that kind of stuff. So what I'm gonna do now is I am going to. Let's see, stop the share. I am going to.